With the Georgian E O T on Main Street Connector, Streetscape Project, Mr. Wood.
Well, I just agree with just reaffirm that the city can receive and expend federal funds, and establishes the scope of the timeframes and the grant amounts. This is for what we refer to as a downtown connector, Main Street connector.
Any questions about that?
I just would like to, for Mr. Wood, say for the media that eighty percent of this is being paid in federal funds and twenty percent is the city, just so that our citizens realize sometimes I get comments about us spending our money fluently.
Well, as I said earlier, this is actually a grant that had been secured by the city a number of years ago. I want to say seven or eight or more years ago, so it's been piped out for that long. But yes, with eighty, twenty, it's correct. We do, we do actually pay a little bit more than twenty percent because of some, some other, other costs associated with utilities, realignment, and that sort of thing, but it's, it's pretty close.
That money comes from splash?
Our share does, yes. Yes, it's a lot of road, roads I look in at.
You don't understand why I'm asking, Mr. Wilson, which I'd like for it to be if it gets into papers and what have you, that citizens are right.
Consent. Mr. Bryan wants you to approve.
I have a motion to approve. I have a second. Any other discussion? Not those in favor signify the same aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? All members voted for the motion. Discussion of possible action to waive construction permit fees for the wastewater treatment plant.
Still move.
I have a motion, do we have a second? Now, this, this is on the, our current wastewater treatment plant that we wanted to make sure that the bidders that are bidding on it, contractors bidding on it, know that we're not going to be charging the permit fee because that just raises the price if they bid, you see? So, they won't have to buy a building permit for this thing, okay? I have a motion and a second. Those in favor signify the same aye. Opposed, no? All members voted for the motion. Item E, discussion and action on Canton's Downtown Square about, Mr. Bexler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I proposed at the work session two weeks ago, to look at the possibility of changing the flow of traffic, and I don't know if there is actually street names, but I think it's just parking lots around the park, the gazebo. And I don't think it takes a blind man to figure out that thing is ridiculous, the way you've got to come in and turn and circle back around and come back up and hope for the best. So, I would like to make a motion that we go ahead and authorize our street department to rotate the signs that are currently there. Yes, we will lose a couple of parking spaces, but we found out good news that we have abundant parking spaces from the survey and study done. And let's correct this situation so that when people come in who are used to roundabouts or squareabouts, they know how to approach an area and move around it safely. Thank you, it's a motion.
I have a motion. That's second. Okay. Any other discussion?
Have we done any study to develop that kind of work, to develop them easily?
Not at this point, actually, that I'm, that I'm aware of. I, I, the only concern that I would have right now is, I've looked at, I'm not sure how many parking spaces we'd actually need to eliminate right in that area in order to, to do that. Because I, I did go out there and take a look from the Jones Building side, looking back, and could be three or four down to the right there because the cars parking all the way up beside the Jones Building there. I have three or four. Also, when you come out by the bank, you're very likely to have to go away with one or two, maybe that in front of the old, old bank there. I'm not, I'm not, is most of the motorcycles there?
Were you through there?
Yeah. No, I wasn't there, but I'm serious. I, I, I was serious when I complimented Mr. Bexler earlier about the suggestions. I thought certain personally things were very bad a suggestion. The reason I wish council would, would perhaps consider deferring action on this tonight is subtle. If you took action on it tonight, it can't be implemented until the renovation of the Jones Building is completed and those fences are removed anyway. So, what would be the harm in asking our consulting engineers simply to look at it with that concept, that valid concept in mind, and determine whether or not that is in fact the best course? And, and if it's implemented, exactly what form that implementation should take? We aren't, as everybody knows, conducting a parking study, that's not completed. And, and again, if you take action tonight, it's not going to be of any effect. So, I don't see the harm in asking our engineer to look at it and be sure that whatever we do is the best thing that can be done when it can be implemented, and we don't know exactly when that would be.
Bexler.
The parking study survey group questioned how come that is the way it is? They recommended that do what I had recommended. That's one study at, at cost that we paid for, and that was part of that study. It wasn't the whole study, but approved. The other thing is, this study that you're looking for, what's that going to cost us? It's going to cost us?
I'm not going to put a premium on safety, so.
I'm not putting a premium on safety either.
Safety issues, and it costs, if it costs us a thousand or two thousand dollars, have our consulting engineer look at it. I don't, that, that, again, if you vote on it tonight, it can't be im, can't be implemented anyway. That's not.
Withdraw the motion.
You still have a comment?
No, that's what that was.
I, I, I think it's an excellent idea, I really do, I'm not a mess. I just wanted to make sure. I guess I, I've been around here long enough to remember when you could go that way. And it worked, it flowed very well. And, you know, I think that's, that's the right, the right way to go, the right way to do things. But I think we could plan it a little bit, go, that is the focal point of the whole city. And when Jones Building gets finished, we want to make sure that all that does flow very well. Hopefully someday that hole filled up over there wouldn't crush it more. Maybe it can't look like something.
Thank you, Dan. Okay. You got something else?
The whole reason that thing was changed because of the post office. So, anyway, it's the way it was, and I think if we go back through the records, we'll find out that it was safe. But that's the reason I say I don't want to be accused of not thinking of public safety first for our good citizens who come in here and those that are not familiar with it right down there and actually turn into the wrong spot because they're used to what the norm is throughout the entire United States. We're special, so we'll leave it at that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Bexler.
You're welcome.
Uh, next item. All right, discussion of possible Y M C athletic field management, uh, Mr. Hutton.
Yes, at our work session, I passed out, or you had your packets, some of the documents that we proposed to use. Of course, had not made any agreement to do so, but asking for y'all to go home and study it and see if there's some areas of concern that we need to address. Not to say that we're going to implement or change, but at the same time, there probably could be some that would be well appreciated. So, at this time, I'd just like to hear if there's some that I know that comes as, it's in legal pads, so let's go.
I never use a legal pad. Mr. Mayor, go ahead. My first question is, shouldn't we make this a general proposal that any organization other than the Ys so we can see that there might be other organizations that could offer similar proposals? That'd be my first point. I don't think we should exclude anybody in making a proposal to do this. The, the second area that I got into a little confusion about is that if we look at the athletic associations, we know that these associations not only will utilize our fields, but they utilize the county parks. And in order to use the county parks, they must go through some sort of approval process to use those fields. I don't know what that process is, but if we add another entity, are we not complicating the process of saying that that athletic association is being vetted by the county to use their parks? And then we're going to turn around and have another organization, whether it be the Y or whoever, vet them also as to the approval process? That would seem redundant to me if they're already approved by the county. Shouldn't it just be an automatic process where they extend, we accept that approval, and the scheduling becomes a different problem, of course? But it, it's also a scheduling, could be potentially a scheduling problem because now you have an athletic association that's using county fields and would want to use our fields, and they have to then deal with two different entities relative to schedule. And again, I have no preference as to who does it. It just seems that we've made the prop, the process of scheduling more complicated for an athletic association. My third area was the fees were sort of stated as exact fees, and I would want those fees to be consistent with whatever fees the county is charging, if they are charging, that, that they would be consistent so we'd have a consistent fee structure. And I'd also want the city to be in control of establishing those fees and probably collecting those fees. It should probably be made payable to the, to the city and not payable to whoever our manager of those fe, fees are, our fields are. There was no finite definition for establishing how much we pay for this service. We should probably lay out a defined methodology of how we would compensate the Y or whoever did it. So, I think that needs to be established, whatever that might be. And, and I don't know if the county would want to do it or if we'd want the county to do it, but we should give some consideration because of the redundancy of scheduling fields, and the redundancy of vetting associations, the possibility of just the county including these fields within the entire scope. I don't know if that's the answer or not, but that's basically what came up was after having read what you did. And what you put together was very good, although.
I may forget what I made.
Let me get Bill, and I'll come right back to you, okay?
I'd just like to kind of remind everybody, when we first started talking about this park and designing it and so-called selling it to the public and whatever, those fields were, were always referred to as free play area or, or open fields where kids could get up and game of frisbee golf or a pickup ballgame or kids could get out there and play with their families and, and stuff like that. And now we're, we're talking like they're going to be designated athletic fields. Next thing you know, there'll be stripes on them and gold set up out there, and, and the whole original intent will be gone. Now, I understand there's going to be some scheduling of free play or openness or whatever, but I just want to caution everybody to remember that the original intent of those, all three of those fields were to be just wide open for the public to use as they see fit. And I don't know when this notion of scheduling play on these fields came up, but, but that's somehow I was, must have not been here or something when that started happening.
Michigan.
Well, y'all probably in Michigan. But, you know, at any rate, that, that's, I just want to caution us. It looks like we're heading in that direction towards making those scheduled athletic fields or practice fields. But we should think about at least designating one of them for free play here, having something like that. I just see down the road a, a real, real issue coming up with that.
I want to refresh my mind to, to address Mr. Bryan a minute. Some good points, the, the fields that we're building at Etowah are going to be pretty first-class fields. Across the river, I hate to say it, but we got this enormous park over there called Heritage. And there's where we should be having that type of play. And that's a whole different issue, I realize that, but if we, I don't know where we stand. That might be a question later, is the, the lady that's helping advise us on what we can do with, with Heritage. But a, a good point, but I think that's, that sure could be addressed. To address Mr. Cummings, and most of the, the documents that you've seen actually are, are the same documents that, that the county uses. And we could, that's a possibility to say if they could bring a certificate of some sort saying they've been approved and the county's willing to stand behind it, I see no reason why we couldn't accept that. In fact, the insurance company will accept, accept that, the fact that they've vetted it correctly. And I, I agree, I don't want to make it any more difficult than, than some of these things already are. But at the same, at the same time, go back and I'll be a little bit philosophical here, is that our city is growing, and we want young people to come to our city and be in downtown Canton and do all the cool things that they see in Woodstock and in Rossville and things like that. Well, they, they bring kids, and we got to have a place for those kids to play. And that, we're becoming a, a city, and we got to do the things that cities do. And this is one of them. The county does a great job. It's just that it's time that our city become just that, a city of taking care of our youth. Our Y has got great experience, they got a great set of values, and we'll, we'll do a, a good job. And they're a valued citizen, business citizen of, of Canton, in that, that building is owned by the city of Canton. So, we have, we want to make sure that they are successful, just as we want to be successful in our endeavors. But I will take those, Mr. Cummings, I'll take those as some good points, and we work through them. The fees right there, I think basically those fees are straight from the county. We, we will, if you notice in the document that I passed out to you, that towards the bottom there is identify or add new, where, which one is it? Oh, the third from the bottom, prepare revenue and expense summaries. You know, we, we got to meet with the various organizations, see what they're paying. And this is what I want to do, ask the mayor to do, is to form a committee. The document that I just laid on you, in front of you, is to ask the mayor to form a committee to conduct the various bullets that are down here. And the committee would consist of somebody from the city at Mr. Wood's discretion, a council member, I'm sure Councilman Goodwin, he's got such a bad, bad background in this and knows the organizations, that he can transition from one field to the other, as well as John Hicks. And we can put a small committee to work through these type of situations to better define, be more definitive as Mr. Cummings wants. I know what you want, we're just not there. We're just taking this small steps at a time to be prepared to play, not in the spring, but in the fall.
Mr. Wood, you have a question on that?
I just wanted some clarification. Didn't, didn't I understand in the last meeting, Mr. Hicks, to say that he would recommend that we give those fields at Etowah a, a grow, a full-growing season before we begin activities on those? So, if that's the case, that we're probably talking about this time next year at the earliest before we would, we would be utilizing.
The fall, the fall of fourteen would be the one. Republicans probably start playing late August, early September, when that soccer season starts.
One last point, and I seldom agree with Mr. Bryan, but in this case, I do agree that you did initially design those fields just for free, open use. And I'm wondering if we shouldn't wait until we have a demand placed on us by associations asking, how can we use those fields for soccer, or how can we use those fields for lacrosse? We, they may sit there three years before any association comes to us and says, hey, we need another field. I don't know what that demand is.
Mr. Cummings, now you can read this.
Okay.
I think one thing too, and, and get back to what Bill had said there. It, it, it brings back to my mind, anyway, our, our discussions with the county about managing the parks and stuff like that. But, you know, I want to think that, that part of that discussion had occurred when we thought we were going to have baseball and softball fields at that place, which is a little different. You don't have too many just go out there and want to play on a softball field, you know, or a baseball field. But you do on these wide open spaces a lot. They pick up soccer games or throw frisbees or whatever, they open. So, I, I remember, it sort of brings it back. So, it, it does make me wonder how we got off on that other part after the fields, the baseball fields were shifted over to, you know, that road. But, anyway, I.
We got a lot of fields now when this opens up, and we just need to better manage it. That's all, and it's better managing. We don't want to hire that person or put that burden on our present staff. And we need some professional help in this and managing all those fields.
What, what, somebody else have anything? What I'll do is I'll give some thought to this, and maybe we can do some, make some appointments there at the next meeting. Yeah, whatever. Okay, let's go to the next item. Discussion of systematic review of Canton's comprehensive plan, Mr. Hutton.
Uh, yes. I, I already made some statements earlier, but the systematic review of the Canton comprehensive plan, it's, it's a good plan we started in oh eight, transmitted, I think, in oh nine to the state, and we are getting ready to transmit updates. And it's a good plan. It's, it tells us where we are, where we want to go, and what some of the things we need to do. But I, I don't see that we are using that plan effectively, and I think that's something that we should do. If we don't involve all, not only the council, but staff as well as outside sources, that maybe we can bring some of these things forward at a, at a little better pace. And the ones that don't fit, we can move them down. But what I like to say is the ones that we want, we want to move them up. The ones that are not in the picture can move down, and, but still keep our focus on, on what we want to do. So, I, I, what my proposal is, is to have this part of the agenda exactly. Mr. Wood's organization might be the one to bring forth the input. And it might be only one or two per meeting so that we won't tie up the whole meeting, of course, towards some of these plans. And over a period of two or three, four months, maybe, we cover the whole plan, and then we start the process over again. So, to me, that is a systematic way of reviewing the comprehensive plan. Otherwise, I don't, we sent the plan in, but it was revised, but is it really doing what the state really wants us to do? Is it really like something that, or is it just an exercise in paperwork? If it is, I guess we have to do it because the state requires it, but I, I just think it's, it's got a lot in there that we need to act on. So, I'm proposing that we put that into the agenda, that we have a systematic update exactly what I'm open, how we want to do that. It might be two, it might be three, it might, one might be big enough that takes up, we only do one. I, I'm not particular on that, other than the fact to stay, stay attuned to it.
Well, you know, I, I don't know, I don't know if we can get it on each agenda, but I would think, you know, if we did something like have a, you know, a pretty good discussion once every three months, or something like that.
May I suggest we get a quarterly report from staff on all the departments? There would be no, no harm in a quarterly report having that information, and then if we discuss that particular meeting.
That's probably a pretty good idea.
Did you think we would look at it?
I looked at the quarterly report.
We just got one, you know?
We just got one on the agenda.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that we're paying attention to it. Then, I guess, if, if a year from now, six months from now, it's doing its own duty, we want to get rid of it?
We could do that as a policy, but I don't know whether it'd do any good.
Well, let's ask Mr. Cummings what he thinks.
What, a quarterly report or doing your thing? I was going to say, instead of doing it every meeting or every other meeting, is just set that up as a separate thing like we do with budgets and every quarter. Have a short meeting and discuss three or four points on a plan. I think your points are well taken, but we're actually, whatever we do, we're working towards what was going to be submitted in five years from now, actually. So, why not just take a view at a time each quarter, have a separate meeting, work session type meeting, discuss them, and then move forward the next couple of years? That's what would be nice.
I think that's, I think that's a good idea, but I think ultimately we have to have a work session when we bring it all together. And I think you've got to look at it in its totality as, instead of one piece at a time, even though I think you can do that, but ultimately you have to get to that complete comprehensive view of it. Anyone else?
I'd like to change the motion that'd be included, again, in the quarterly report. Then should we, at that next meeting, turn to it and look at it as a council?
Right.
So, it will be on the agenda, I'll see if it's on.
Just second to motion. Any other discussion? Not those in favor signify the same aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? All right, now, let's see now. Yeah, H proclamation policy, Mr. Bexler.
Thank you, Mayor. The city of Canton proclamation policy, I have no problem with the, the whole document except one little piece of it. Under the sentence, it says, "Special honors to individuals or organizations who have made significant contributions to the city of Canton or to its residents on the recommendation of the mayor or city manager." I would like to have on there a city council. That's all I'd like to have that added. If that's okay, then I would make the motion that we, isn't that usually when you read those, Mr. Mayor, that you say mayor and council?
I usually do, I mean, I have no problem with that.
But the word council needs to be in there.
I have no problem with that.
Mr. Mayor, this, this is where you are selecting, or somebody is selecting, or somebody's looking at it to have that there, where council would have an input. Now, proclamations, I know they come across your desk numerous times, but it's just, it's just a simple little housekeeping item. So, as stated. Did you make a motion with that, with that caveat stuck in there?
Let me, let me, let me ask this question. And you want that worded, I see, "Special honors to individuals or organizations who have made significant contributions to the city of Canton or to its residents on the recommendation of the mayor, the city manager, or the council?" Or how do you want to do that?
Mayor slash council member.
Oh, or coun, or council member. Okay, sure.
Because other than the city council, we'd have to vote on it.
That's, you know, we don't want to do that. Yeah, that's fine. We had a motion for that. Okay, and a second. All right, any other discussion about that, any changes? If not, those in favor signify the same aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? All members voted for the motion. Okay, under new business, I don't have nothing. City managers' report, you have that in your package? You have any questions about his M O D, then answer that. If not. What were you going to ask?
Let him say, he's, he has mentioned a report, then I'll say, I want to say something. Oh, we did.
He did, go ahead.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. The quarterly report that we all got and read in detail, I know for a number of years we've talked about cutting back on the, the depth and. back on the, the depth and thickness of it. And thank goodness Utility Partners, uh, caught wind of it and has addressed it. And they've done a fine job, because now we've cut back on thirty or forty pages of that part of the document. But, uh, the, the other departments have done an excellent job. And some of the presentations have been changed, and they're really easy to read and follow. But there's two key parts here. Our public safety department, the police and the fire department, documents were excellent on this report. And, and the point is, we have an excellent interpretation of what is happening with our public safety departments, what they're doing. And if citizens ask us a question about issues, crime in the city, we've got details of it. And I think that was, uh, to me, acceptable in the amount of additional information there. And I gotta say, we look good. And I just want to thank Mr. Wood and his department for the quarterly report and how it's been handled and how it's been utilized now. And it's a good document. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
Mr. Cummings made a suggestion, I think, earlier this week or this weekend about maybe being able to condense some of those, some of those graphs or charts. And I did speak to Chief Burden about that. And I think he's looking at, maybe ways to, to better condense some of this. Uh, what we need to know is that the information that, that you folks want is the information that we'll, we'll be providing. We always look for better ways to format it. We can condense something, we'll condense something. Or if we need to expand something, we'll expand it. But we certainly want you to give us some feedback on whether or not it's what you want.
If, if I may, Mr. Wood, I, I'd like to bring up the fact that, that we've been, this has been an ongoing project for Mr. Bearseford and I for probably a couple of years. And I know we've got the, the public works department. We, we've worked hard with them and they, they were targeted to get the, the graphs in a, in a way that we can understand that we're meaningful as opposed to throwing a, a whole bunch of numbers at us. And I think, uh, as far as I'm concerned, the information that we're getting in the report is what we need and it helps us make judgments. I don't, you know, I, I don't know if any, you know, maybe you could condense some of the, some of the charts on two, one page, two on one page, or something like that. But I think all the information we're giving is, is pretty well documented and easy to understand.
Okay, Scott? Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the, the first one that I looked at was, is that we, we have an excellent police department. You can see how low our crime rates are and everything. And my suggestion was that we take those sixteen pages of graphs that if, where you take like from, for example, we got one that says robberies. It said one from one robbery to two robberies to two robberies. And basically, you could take those sixteen and present all of that information in a, in a, in a table-type form that would show you basically the same thing. Cause, uh, uh, you know, somebody could say, well, gee, we had a fifty percent increase in robberies. Well, going from one to two is insignificant, is, in, in my opinion. So, the interpretation of fifty percent or a graph going up and then coming back down is really, uh, not giving us clear a picture as one, two, two presented in one page. And I made that recommendation just to show it in a ta, a table format, which contained all the same information.
I'll just say, again, we're subject to, are open to any, any revision or better ways to do it. You, you folks tell us what best serves your purposes, we'll try to accommodate that.
Just don't lose our transparency, because those numbers are reported to each one of us. At some time during our walking around the cities or neighborhoods, or ask about it. And it's nice to be able to respond.
Still have.
Well, if there's anything that's not being included, it, it comes up, if you want to.
Let's move on to the, uh, council introduced items. Uh, discussion in action regarding the Ridge Road collection site, Mr. Rush?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this has background to everybody out there and here that, uh, about three years ago, uh, I think I asked the question, how much this collection site was costing us, if we knew. And, and we never had it down, you know, anywhere on paper that council could see. And we found at that time, we were losing about ninety thousand dollars a year. So, Mr. Bearseford and I and Mr. Wood and Dave Kengemi were looking at it. We'd made, and the council, we made modifications over the years. And last year in two thousand and twelve, uh, we got it down to losing only twelve thousand dollars. Now, uh, understanding that we can't shut this thing down because the city needs it, and the city cost, as indicated in the report, is roughly sixty-six, seven thou, or seven thousand dollars a year. So, but in fiscal year twenty thirteen, we've lost double what we lost in fiscal year two thousand and twelve. So, something's going awry. And the one thing it looked to me that, that the big problem we had was we were keeping this thing open full-time, having a full-time employee. And wages and benefits were the biggest hurt in the whole program. So, after discussion with Mr. Bearseford, Mr. Wood, and Mr. Kengemi, uh, we've opted to, uh, or they've opted to open it three days a week on the busiest days historically, the Friday, Saturday, and Monday, and employ a part-time person for whom we don't have to pay benefits. So, we don't know, we, the impact should be favorable to the city. We, we won't know what that is for a couple of months. But the, the action that I would like to take, and Mr. Wood says we need a, a vote from the council, is to, uh, make a motion that we close, we open the collection site only on Friday, Saturday, and Mondays, instead of every, every day of the week, or six days a week. So, my motion is to allow Mr. Wood to keep the collection site open only on Friday, Saturday, and Monday. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Could I, uh, Mr. Mayor, could I ask you to, uh, consider a, an effective date for that, so that we give, add a notice?
Do you want, do you want to give me one?
Uh, or what?
What's convenient, or are you, or you?
December one, is that too far away?
December, December was, one would work fine. That would be roughly forty-five days.
Okay. Okay, that's fine.
Let me ask you a question. His, uh, well, you made a motion, do we have a second to that?
Sure.
Have a second. Um, are we gonna reduce personnel over there?
Yes. Well, we only have one person there.
So, is he just going half-time then?
He would go part-time, yes, sir. And, and, and savings that Mr. Rush identified would come, uh, of course, and a re, and salary reduction because of, uh, reduction in hours. But, but, uh, more significant perhaps is elimination of benefits. That person is a senior citizen now, is so, so, uh, benefits would not be as crucial to that person as it would someone who's not a senior.
If, to, to expand a little bit, I said the loss in twenty thirteen was twenty-three thousand dollars. If we added benefits, it would be closer to forty thousand.
Benefits, benefits are provided, he means in that calculation.
Yeah, in the calculation.
How long?
Yeah.
Would that, would it be open for the city to use?
It'll remain open for the city to use.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion or questions? I have a motion in a second. To, and the motion is, is that we, uh, curtail, uh, some of the hours at the Ridge Road collection site such that, uh, it will be open, uh, Friday, Saturday, and Monday.
Right. Beginning December first.
Beginning December first, right. Any other questions? If not, there's a favor signified the same eye? Oppose, no? All members voting for the motion. Okay, now we have a special recognition, Jack?
Um, the Collins Dixon, um, run that's held every year, this was the second year, and we've provided the stage to these people, uh, conducting this event. They bring in a lot of people from the, all around. I think they, well, over hundreds of runners, um, come each, each year. And, uh, so they provided a plaque to us, uh, Second Annual Collins Dixon Benjers' Day. It was on July the thirteenth, two thousand and thirteen. This plaque says, Second Annual Collins Dixon Benjers' Run, May the Workout Done Speak For Me. And the donations to this, I think they were a little over twelve thousand dollars, if I remember, uh, that they actually made. And it goes to children's brain cancer. It says, we are thankful to our mayor, Gene Hopgood, city of Canton, council Jack Goodwin, and entire council and city, uh, Canton employees for their hard work and their dedication to help make this Collins Dixon Benjers' Run a huge success. Benjers' Award, July thirteenth, two thousand and thirteen. And, uh, okay, this is, uh, it's a, it's a very good, uh, event that comes to the city and, and all of our restaurants and many of our motels, different businesses, uh, from this. And certainly, they appreciate getting the use of the stage there.
Thank you very much. Very nice. Uh, okay, next item is the Etowah River Park Discussion Special.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, in, uh, Mr. Wood's letter to us, it was referred to as it's time for us to officially, uh, identify that park's name. I make a motion that it will be called Etowah River Park.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? If not, there's a favor signified the same eye? Oppose, no?
Yeah, all members voted for Rush. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
One other item.
Was it, that was on the agenda, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sure, okay. Go ahead. Other was noticed on, had noticed on that?
I would, I, I would just like to, uh, recognize our city clerk, uh, for the outstanding job that she does for the council and the mayor. And we've received a letter from her, uh, talking about her duties. And one of the things that she took upon herself was to go in and go through the hodgepodge boxes, uh, stacks of filing cabinets and all sorts of stuff that is very important for this city's history, documentations. It had been thrown off into different rooms, in different corners, in different boxes. And she has taken the time to go in, and, and I'll just read this part, after initial purging, assorted through the remaining documents, filing them into a logical and orderly way. And I'm glad to say that I no longer cringe when asked for documents, because it had been, people would come to her and say, can you find this for me? And there was just no rhyme nor reason. And I just want to recognize Susan Stanton for a superior job. Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay. Don't believe we have anything else, so anything, a motion there?
I'm through.
A motion, a favor signified the same eye?
I want to apologize for the phone calls. It's very personal, but...
Sorry.
Thank you.
Glad you're doing good.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I don't, I don't, you know, I don't have a lower lip, you know. Nobody wants a full man to begin with, and they don't have a lower lip, you know.
Don't make it over.
As long as I don't get a spanner in my butt.
How you doing?
I'm getting out of here.